We're on to item number 12, which is still under ordinances and action items. However, this is our initial look at the consideration of municipal code amendments to our municipal code, Chapter 10 dot 90, expanding existing policies to reduce exposure to secondhand smoke, including in multi-unit housing, entryways, public events, service areas, and outdoor work sites. And so, Madam City Manager, if you would please introduce the staff report.
I can introduce the staff. Katie, I'm her assistant to the city manager. I'm here today with Leslie Zellers, is our consultant from the county, and she'll be providing the presentation to go over the options of what's being proposed in this ordinance. As a reminder, this was provided as a study session back in September, I believe, and so a lot of the context was laid out there, but we're going to go over it again this year.
Great, welcome.
Thanks, Katie. I'm really happy to be here and to see all of you and to meet the new council members who weren't part of the study session last fall. I'm going to go ahead and bring up the PowerPoint. I know we have the distinct pleasure of being last on the agenda, so we don't need to make this longer than it needs to be, but I want to make sure you have all the information you need to have a vote here. As background, as Katie just mentioned, there was a study session with the council on September 15th last fall, and at that time, council supported the general approach presented by staff and asked staff to conduct additional outreach through to the community and to businesses. So, we did that over the past several months, including a survey, specific outreach to businesses, and a few online community meetings, and tonight, we're here with a proposed ordinance for your consideration. As many of you know, tobacco remains the number one preventable cause of death and disease in the United States. The Santa Clara County Public Health Department has a Healthy Cities Program, which provided a grant to Cupertino to work on this issue, and they recommend evidence-based tobacco policies, of which secondhand smoke policies are one. So in addition to the grant, the city is receiving technical assistance from me and from others in the county to provide support. For secondhand smoke, there is no safe level of exposure, and that's according to the U.S. Surgeon General, and the Centers for Disease Control says that eliminating exposure to smoke is really the only way to protect non-smokers. This is a greater concern during COVID. One of the issues is smoke-free multi-unit housing, since so many more people are at home all day long. They are increasingly bothered by their neighbor's smoke, so there are a lot more complaints about this issue to the Health Department. The main elements in the ordinance do address requiring smoke-free multi-unit housing, which I'll tell you in a moment how we're defining that, entryways around entrances of buildings, public events, service areas, which are basically areas where you line up to receive a service, and outdoor work sites. And I'll tell you a little bit more about each of those. So this was part of the staff report as one of the attachments. It's a grid that shows you what other cities in the county have done. This is the half, it's only half of the grid because it's huge and it would be difficult to read everything, but across the top, you can see in the blue boxes, those are different areas to make smoke free, starting with parks and trails, and then all the way to the right, multi-unit housing, common areas, and outdoor work sites. So you can see Cupertino already had policies on smoke-free parks, outdoor dining, and entryways, and in the green shading indicates that the city is working on it. So I'll provide additional detail on which cities have done what, but you can also refer back to this grid if you have any specific questions. For the definition of smoking, what we're talking about is, of course, traditional cigarettes, but also electronic smoking devices like e-cigarettes, or vapes, or they come under a variety of names, and smoking of marijuana, so any product that is smoked, combustible or otherwise. For smoke-free multi-unit housing, the ordinance includes a couple different provisions. It would be all common areas would be smoke-free. Those are areas like the parking lot, pool areas, outdoor walkways. Those would all be required to be smoke-free, and there would be a 30-foot buffer zone around doors and windows where smoking would be prohibited. Maybe the most significant component is prohibiting smoking inside of your unit, so if you live in an apartment or a condo, you would no longer be able to smoke in your unit. But owners have the option of creating designated smoking areas on the property. So when we talk about multi-unit housing, we're talking about two or more attached units. So it's anything that's sharing a wall, or a ceiling, or a floor. That would include apartments, condominiums that are attached, townhomes, duplexes, triplexes, attached single-family. I remember the mayor saying he actually lives in one of those, so that's something that Cupertino has a certain number of. We're, staff did some research on this. There are approximately 9,300 units that would be affected by this ordinance. And staff also put together a map where you can enter your address to determine whether you live on a property that would be affected by this ordinance. So you can see the border of the city, and then the pink shaded areas are the multi-unit housing. You can, of course, zoom in to see more specifically which properties are affected. And the website for this, the link for the website, is in the staff report. Multi-unit housing does not include a completely detached single-family, so if you're not sharing a wall with another home, you are free to smoke wherever you would like. It also does not include accessory dwelling units, ADUs, or backyards of single-family homes. There was a discussion at the study session about that, and the direction from council was to potentially address that at a later time. The ordinance exempts ADUs. If council would like to address this more specifically, there is an option to include ADUs that are attached to single-family homes, because those are essentially sharing a wall, so that's something you can talk about. Other components of the ordinance are smoke-free entryways. The current law prohibits smoking and outdoor dining already, and 25 feet from restaurants, but it doesn't affect other locations. So the proposed ordinance would create a 30-foot buffer zone around doorways, windows of any non-smoking building, so that would apply to things like retail, places of worship, Safeway, office buildings, so you don't see people gathered right around the entrance smoking. The reason it's changed from 25 feet to 30 feet is based on the survey results. Fifty-five percent of respondents said that the buffer zone should be greater than 25 feet in order to provide sufficient protection, so that's what's included in the ordinance. There are 10 other cities in Santa Clara County that have laws like this. They all have a slightly different buffer zone requirement. There are three cities that have a 30-foot buffer specifically. Smoke-free public events is another element of the ordinance. These are probably not something we're all going to quite as much these days, but things like farmers' markets, parades, or music events that would be on public property would be required to be smoke-free, and there are nine laws on this within Santa Clara County. Smoke-free service areas, this is perhaps a more common occurrence these days as we wait in line in order to get into a business. So grocery store, if you're waiting at the ATM, or transit stops, things like that, anywhere where you're lining up, that would be smoke-free. And there are 10 laws on this topic in Santa Clara County. And the last element is smoke-free outdoor work sites. So state law requires any enclosed area, any indoor workplace, including bars and restaurants, to be smoke-free, but outdoor work sites are not currently required to be smoke-free, so this would apply to things like outdoor construction work, or people who work on utilities. And there are three other cities with laws on this in Santa Clara. So now I'm going to describe a little bit about the outreach. As I mentioned, we did an online survey, was open in October and November of last year, close to 300 responses. Almost all of those are Cupertino residents. We did a couple of community meetings. Councilmember Moore actually attended one of those meetings. And there was a mailer sent to every resident in the city, an article in the scene, and then outreach specifically to businesses. Staff made calls to 51 different homeowners associations and multi-unit housing properties to let them know that the city was considering this ordinance. We did a presentation to the Chamber of Commerce, and there was an article in the Biz Buzz newsletter. So the survey results are also in the staff report here. There was overwhelmingly positive support for the different policy proposals. You can see it's over 85% for outdoor common areas, and the survey asked about 25 feet from doors and windows, but then offered another question about should the buffer zone be larger than 25 feet? Seventy-four percent of people supported smoke-free inside apartments and condominiums. That's a pretty high number compared to what other cities have seen. For some of the other outdoor areas, close to 90% for service areas, 85% for public events, the slightly lower for outdoor work sites, still a majority, and then maybe the largest support was for a buffer zone around entryways, 91.2%. Let me just touch on, the full survey results are in the staff report, including all of the open-ended responses that people provided if they wanted to, say, provide additional comment on what the city was doing. Those comments were mostly positive. People really applauded the city for taking action in this area, and some people wanted the city to go even further and have a completely smoke-free city. There were a few comments in opposition. Those I would generally categorize under government overreach. Is this something that the city should be doing? Perhaps it should be the landlord's decision, just wondering about enforcement and implementation. So speaking of implementation, there will be a six-month phase-in period for the ordinance, so if you vote on the ordinance, it would not become operative until October 1st of this year. That gives the city opportunity to provide outreach and education to the business community and to property owners, because the property owners will have to update their leases to specify that it's non-smoking. And the county will provide no smoking signs free of charge that can be distributed to people who own multi-unit housing and to businesses, and that's been a really effective strategy in helping make sure everyone knows about the new law. In terms of enforcement, these laws in other communities are largely self-enforcing. Once people know that it's the rule, they can take the onus on themselves to tell their neighbor, did you know that it's now against the law to stop smoking or in public areas? If it's necessary, the landlords can enforce this provision through the lease as they would any other lease provision. So it's, if you had a tenant who had a pet illegally, or they were throwing loud parties, or other things that were bothersome to tenants, it would be the same procedure. Obviously, we'd strongly discourage any action that would lead to eviction, and the first step, of course, would be outreach and education. For homeowners associations, they can enforce this through their HOA rules, and the city, of course, can also enforce it as an infraction. And neighbors have an option of private enforcement if they feel like the city and their landlord are not being responsive. They could potentially bring an action against their neighbor for smoking. So the recommended action is to conduct the first reading of the ordinance. The mayor, Darcy, already read the title, so I don't need to read it here. And that's it. Any questions?
Great, thank you, Leslie. We do have a hand raised from Councilmember Moore.
Thank you for the presentation, Leslie. So I'm just wondering about these designated smoking areas. So does that mean that any multi-unit housing can have a designated smoking area? And what are the rules around it? My concern is that one of these smoking areas could be essentially placed on the property line of a neighbor and actually be impacting the neighbor worse than they would be impacting their own property? And is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Right, so it's a great question. There are a number of requirements, criteria in the ordinance for the designated smoking area. It has to be outdoors, of course, it has to be 30 feet from areas that children use, 30 feet from doorways and windows of any unit, have an area for cigarette butts to be deposited, and have signage. The question, I'm going to double-check the ordinance, because different cities have done this different ways about, because your question is specifically for a neighbor that's someone else's property, and I'm trying to remember exactly how it addresses that. So let me look that up while we're talking, and I will get back to you.
Okay, and the other part I wanted to see was, because to me, an attached ADU or a junior ADU is, that's now, to me, if that falls into your definition of multi-unit housing, and so I'm kind of curious about implementing this ordinance and pulling the ADUs and junior ADUs back into it rather than exempting them. I'm just curious if there's, yeah, about doing that, and then we'll see later if council's interested in that or not.
Yeah, another good question, and Katie can jump in here. We did some research on this. No other city in Santa Clara County, there are six other ordinances for smoke-free housing in Santa Clara County, and not all of them exempt ADUs. Because we didn't get directions specifically on this point from council, we didn't want to go too far in recommending that, but it is an option for you to consider, and really the logic is what you said, it becomes attached at that point. And so if that's our goal, to protect people who are in a unit that's attached to another unit, then you could potentially look at adding that.
Right, so if council gave the direction, we can make change to include attached ADUs. I will also say that at the community meetings, some of the attendees did bring that up and asked, you know, will ADUs be included? What if they're attached? Isn't that very similar? So that was a comment that we received.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Moore and Leslie. Katie, Councilmember Way has her hand raised.
Yes, so I have a couple of questions. So your slide with duplex, triplex, and it doesn't include fourplex? Because I didn't see that listed.
It does, yeah. Sorry, that was shorthand. Those were examples, yes. Duplex, triplex, fourplex.
Because I didn't see that one, I'm telling, okay. So the, it says inside apartments and condos, they can't smoke either. So does that mean all apartments and condos in Cupertino are smoke-free? No smokers could move into any of the apartments or condos?
Okay, so that's a great distinction. I can still be a smoker and live in one of those apartments. The answer to the first part of your question is yes. All apartments and condos in Cupertino would be smoke-free. But I can still be a smoker and move in. This ordinance would regulate where I smoke. So in Santa Clara County, the smoking rate for adults is somewhere around 10%. We're talking about very few people who still smoke, and a lot of them already don't, choose not to smoke in their own home. They go outside because they're worried about the exposure to their kids or pets, or for other reasons, the smell even. And so what this ordinance would be doing is saying that I would need to go off-site in order to smoke.
Got it, okay.
Okay, any other questions from council? Councilmember Willie.
Yeah, so, yeah, I think overall, you know, the time has come. We need to promote healthier lifestyles, and so this is great, but I do have a concern. With a lot of things, things get grandfathered in, and that preserves the rights of the people that happen to have, you know, started whatever they did. And so I have kind of a problem with attached, single-family homes, or condos, or townhouses that are owner-occupied. So when we're talking about apartments and things, and after the fact, people, it looked like in your survey, 10% are not okay with it, and you say, you know, 10% of people still smoke. And so when we're talking about an apartment, and somebody's been there for a long time, and now there's a new ordinance that says it's smoke-free except outside wherever it's designated, okay, I think I can go along with that, that the person might want to give up his apartment and take up one in San Jose. When we start talking about condominiums, townhouses, or attached, single-family homes that are owner-occupied, the person may have bought their house 20 years ago, and they're a smoker, and now we as a city come and put in a law that says you cannot smoke in your house. You bought it, you own it, you've been there for 20, 30, 40 years, you cannot smoke in your house. I would be looking to say that, you know, there should be some kind of a grandfather clause for owner-occupied. If it's a renter that's renting somebody else's condominium, you know, he has the opportunity to go and rent someplace else. But selling your house is a huge, I mean, the tax bill that you're going to get hit with would prevent so many people from moving, and yet they're being told they can't do what they used to do in their house that they purchased. And so I really struggle with that. I wonder how the rest of the council feels about that. But beyond that, you know, I do think, you know, introducing more and more limits on smoking areas, even outside where people work, I mean, construction workers are probably a fairly large population that still smoke, but it is outside, they can go to another location and things like that, but that, ah, they have a problem with that, that inside owner-occupied. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Willie. I'm not taking that as a question, so I'm not going to seek a response from staff or outside presenter. Vice Mayor Chow, your hand is up?
Yeah, so, yeah, I can, I'm also a little concerned how much overreach we have. I understand people have, my question is, okay, so is there any way that an owner of a unit, for example, can do improvements so that they can smoke inside, but it doesn't impact other people? I think we don't, we can't really control what everyone does to themselves, but then the intention of this ordinance is that their smoking could not harm other people. And so say if someone owns condo, could they possibly install something so at least they can still do it inside the unit if they choose to? We are sure it will not get into any ventilation system to affect their neighbors. Then they can be exempt from this.
Yeah, it's a really good question, and that's why the Centers for Disease Control says that eliminating the source of the smoking is really the only way to protect non-smokers. They have looked, because lots of people have tried ventilation systems. You look at casinos in Las Vegas, they have plenty of, you know, very expensive ventilation systems, and the testing shows that it actually just is not effective at protecting people. There are just too many ways that the smoke can permeate between units. It's not just the ventilation system, it's cracks, it's electrical outlets, it's, you know, through the windows and the balcony. And so that's really why other communities have addressed this, is because that's the only way to fully solve the problem is by removing the source.
Okay, well, seeing no other questions from council, I'll move this on to our public for commentary. I do see three hands up, and I just want to remind people, once our first speaker gets done speaking, that will be the end of your ability to raise your hand to speak. Now we have four speakers. They are Vanessa Marvin, Jennifer Griffin, Tao Vu, Peggy Griffin, two more, Tessa Parish, and Jen Grant Lahano. Welcome, Vanessa.
Hi, good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Vanessa Marvin. I'm a parent, I'm actually a condo owner and a resident, and I'm a co-chair of the Tobacco-Free Coalition of Santa Clara County. Our coalition represents numerous organizations and individuals across the county working on eliminating tobacco and the harms from tobacco. And so both the coalition and myself personally are really happy that you're considering so many strong secondhand smoke provisions for the residents of Cupertino tonight. As Leslie spoke earlier, secondhand smoke exposure is harmful and potentially deadly. Children, the elderly, and the disabled are most vulnerable. Citizens are also the most vulnerable to secondhand smoke exposure. In particular, protecting residents from secondhand smoke where they live is urgent. As anyone who's lived in multi-unit housing can attest firsthand, the home is a huge source of secondhand smoke exposure, and especially nowadays when we're all spending so much time at home. And to some of the, to address a little bit the questions brought up by the councilmember Wiley, you know, I own my condo, but the rules in a condo change all the time. The HOA changes rules on where we can barbecue, what we can do in our unit, what we can do with our balcony, what happens in our common areas. The city and state change rules. As part of being a condo owner, you understand that these rules do change even though you own your home. And I also think that, you know, we do worry a lot, me too, about, you know, what happens to an owner who is living in a place and can't sell their home. But I also think a lot, and that, you know, a lot of organizations that we work with get calls from non-smokers who are being impacted by secondhand smoke drifting into their unit, and they also struggle with the fact that it's really hard to sell a place. You can't just pick up as an owner, as a condo owner, you can't just pick up and move. And so they have a place that they have bought, they have a mortgage, and they now can't live in that unit because secondhand smoke is drifting into their unit and hurting their children or their family members. So I also just want to say thank you for considering the other steps that you're taking to protect residents in other venues in your community, the public events and service areas. They're really common sense policies that have been adopted by a majority of the cities across Santa Clara County, and we are thrilled to have that protection extended to Cupertino. These policies will set a strong and healthy example for our children as we move back to hopefully a new normal world, where we're again going to community events and restaurants and out in our community. So we really thank you for considering these really important policies. Thank you.
Thank you, Vanessa. Our next speaker is Jennifer Griffin, followed by Tao Vu, Peggy Griffin, Tessa Parish, Jen Grant Lahano, and Carol Baker will be our last speaker. So welcome, Jennifer.
Thank you, Mayor Darcy. Yes, this is a very interesting topic. Interesting to see the evolution of how, where this is going. I just had a couple of comments. I think you all were talking about the ADU and the junior ADU issue. You might even be discussing more about it later, but currently, ADUs and JADUs can be within four feet of a property line, and, you know, whether the ADU is, well, whether it's attached to the house on the lot or is detached, the four feet becomes an issue for neighbors who live on the other side of the fence, because as you all know, smoke can travel. And what does this mean in terms of, I think that JADUs and ADUs should be treated like multifamily housing, and that they should, people should not be allowed to smoke in them, and they should not be allowed to smoke outside of the ADU within four feet of the property line, because then what's happening is that the neighbors, I mean, normally with a single-family home or maybe duplexes, you have a certain setback, but, and that setback is normally in the backyard, front yard, and with a lot of the duplex combinations also. But if you have ADUs and JADUs being set all over the yard, which is what are potentially happening, also if we have the wiener bills come through where you can have four to six to eight units per lot, we're not there yet, plus the 2J, the JADU and the ADU, you could have six to 10 units per lot, four feet from the property line. I really think that this should be discussed, that the JADUs and the ADUs should be subject to the same issues of apartments and multifamily. Also, what about marijuana was recently legalized to some extent, what about marijuana smoking in these locations? A lot of young people might be using this, and is this fair? Is marijuana smoke as dangerous as tobacco smoke? And how are you handling this issue with marijuana? It is smoking, it can hurt other people too, so has that been thrown into the discussion? Thank you very much.
Jennifer, anyone want to briefly answer that? There are some, there's some time left in this commentary with regard to marijuana smoke and junior ADUs within four feet of the property line. Leslie or Katie, any thoughts on that?
So I can, so the marijuana piece of it, marijuana is included in the definition of smoking, so that would be included in this.
And then with regard to these housing laws that put ADUs close to the property lines of, you know, other people's property, will this implicate those as well?
No, not if they don't share a wall. No, not if they don't share a wall or a ceiling floor.
Okay, got it. Okay, thank you very much. Our next speaker is Tao Vu, followed by Peggy Griffin and Tessa Parish. Welcome, Tao.
Hi there. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. My name is Tao. I am a Tobacco Prevention and Control Intern with Breath California. I'm not a resident of the city of Cupertino, but I do manage the Secondhand Smoke Helpline. That services the Bay Area and Central Coast Counties. Some of these callers are residents of Cupertino, and I'm here tonight to share their grievances with you. A large percent of our callers live in either apartments, condos, townhouses, or duplexes, where smoke from a neighbor can easily enter into their homes. Despite closing the windows and keeping the doors closed, these individuals are still bearing the burden of smoke coming through the vents, beneath the doorways, and even through the walls. One caller was a 14-year-old who could not leave her room to use the restroom because it smelled so bad, as she explained. The last year has been especially difficult with shelter-in-place mandates. A common tone from these callers is a sense of helplessness, as they are unable to control the environment of the homes they inhabit. And little have no support from their apartment managers or HOA. So I hope you consider their situations during your deliberation on stricter nonsmoking ordinances in the city of Cupertino. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tao. Our next speaker is Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, Mayor Paul, Vice Mayor Chow, council members, and staff. My slide's a little bit outdated because I've changed a little bit due to the discussion, but my main concern is protecting sidewalks from secondhand smoke. Requiring all these places to not smoke on their property forces these people who are addicted to cigarettes to step onto the sidewalk. And so, and I like the idea of, if you've got some smokers, you provide them a place to smoke on the property. But then Councilmember Moore pointed out that odds are they're gonna put it right up to the property line, and the poor resident on the other side of that fence, if the wind is blowing, will get not one smoker, but 30 smokers and their smoke. So I don't know how to solve it, but protecting our, forcing people in multi-housing and outdoor work sites and offices to not smoke forces them on our sidewalks. And then the public is forced to avoid them, to go out into the street, and to avoid the smoke. The ADUs, I don't have an opinion. Forget the second point. Kirsten, can you go to the next page, please? This is what my concern is, another concern. The apartment complex near me suddenly went non-smoking and forced their smokers to find a place to smoke. They're working at home, so they step out onto the sidewalk, and they put cigarette butt after cigarette butt on the sidewalks and in the gutters. And they go into the bay, and they pollute our waters and plug up probably the sewers. So I don't know if there's anything you can do to address that, but please protect our sidewalks. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Our next speaker is Tessa Parish, followed by Jen Grant Lahano, followed by Carol Baker, who was our last speaker. Welcome, Tessa.
Hi, good evening, and thank you for letting me talk, Mayor and Vice Mayor and council members. I'm actually one of those people that Councilmember Willie mentioned had to move. I just had my baby living in Santa Clara. We lived in a condo upstairs, and the condo down below us sold to a chain smoker. And boy, it was horrible. I had a newborn baby, two months old, and I couldn't stop smelling the smoke. I mean, that person was just chain smoking, and there was no nice way. I tried to just let her know that it was bothering us, and that I had a newborn baby. And so she went from the bedroom, which was right below my bedroom, to the balcony, and it was, it just, there was no way out of it. We had to sell. And it was brutal. So there's, you know, it's hard on both parties when the smokers have to sell, but it's also bad on the people that own the unit and have to move because of that. It really was hard. So I thank you for considering that. And I, too, I'm very concerned about the government. I tend to be very conservative in not placing rules on the people. But in this case, just because I lived the horror of it, I just had to call and voice my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Tessa. And our next speaker is Jen Grant Lahano, followed by Carol Baker. Welcome, Jen.
Thank you. My name is Jen Grant Lahano. I am the Government Relations Director for Northern California for the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network. And our mission is to end suffering and death from cancer. So thank you for taking up this important ordinance tonight. You heard earlier tonight the threat that lung cancer poses to our future, and the toll that it takes every day. We are especially concerned about secondhand smoke in multi-unit housing, for all the reasons you've heard earlier in comment. Exposure to secondhand smoke has killed more than two and a half million nonsmokers since 1964, according to a 2014 report by the U.S. Surgeon General, who's declared that there is no safe level of exposure to secondhand smoke. Secondhand smoke in multi-unit housing is especially troubling, as secondhand smoke can and does transfer between units, seeping under doorways, through wall cracks. With so many of us working from home and staying at home as much as possible to avoid exposure to COVID, protections for secondhand smoke have never been so important, especially when faced with the respiratory pandemic. We urge you to adopt the strongest policy possible to create 100% smoke-free multi-unit housing and public places, like the ordinance before you tonight. Thank you very much, Leslie Zellers, for preparing such a great ordinance. Everyone deserves to breathe clean air in their homes, regardless of whether they can afford to rent or buy. And we urge you to include owner-occupied multi-unit housing as well. And we urge you to adopt the strongest ordinance possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Our next and last speaker is Carol Baker. Welcome, Carol.
Thank you. My name is Carol Baker, and I am a resident of Cupertino, and also along with Vanessa Marvin. I am the co-chair of the Tobacco Free Coalition of Santa Clara County. I want to repeat what your last speaker just mentioned, that there is no safe level of exposure to secondhand smoke. And I want to address what Councilmember Wiley was speaking about, that, to say, on the other hand, Councilmember Wiley, there are 90% of the citizens of Cupertino that are nonsmokers, who have lived here for 20, or 30, or 40 years, and have had to deal with secondhand smoke all of those years. I think it's time to protect them. I appreciate very much what you folks are doing to protect the citizens of Cupertino, and I'm hoping that we can get an A on the American Lung Association's report card. And thank you very much, again, for considering this.
Great. Thank you, Carol. And thank you for bringing your comment. In under a minute, I will bring this back to council. Would anyone like to bring forth a motion to enable us to continue a discussion on this item? I see a hand up. I want to call on the hand, given that it's up. Councilmember Moore.
Okay, well, this might be a little bit complicated. Okay, do we have the ordinance number handy? Because I'm looking at the recommended action and it has-
Twenty-one dash two-two-two-four.
Okay, so, so I want to also amend it, and I don't know if there's any appetite to do that. Okay, so how am I going to do this? I move that ordinance number 21-2224, an ordinance of the City Council of the city of Cupertino, amending City Code Chapter 10.90 of Title 10, to prohibit smoking in multi-unit housing and certain outdoor areas, which includes a finding that adoption of the ordinance is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. With an amendment that Item I-6, a detached, single-family home with an attached or detached accessory dwelling unit or second unit, be struck and moved into Item I, such that multi-unit residence means property containing two or more attached units, including but not limited to apartment buildings, condominiums, duplexes and triplexes, senior and assisted living facilities, comma, a detached, single-family home with an attached or detached accessory dwelling unit or second unit, comma, and long-term health care facilities.
Okay, so let me see if I'm understanding your motion correctly. So Councilmember Moore, when you say I-6, you're referring to the first subsection, correct? That's 10-point-
Yeah, that's one, yeah, 1I-6. And what I'm, what I'm, my ask is that we include, because we're saying that multi-unit residence means property containing two or more attached units, including but not limited to, and it might need to be further amended because it's saying attached, but I want to include detached, single-family home with an attached or detached accessory dwelling unit or second unit. I'm seeing that word attached in the first line, which might, you know, run-
Well, let me back up to clarify-
I see what I'm trying to do, though. So help me out if you're interested.
I think the city attorney might have, might have some alternate language prepared, or staff might have some language that will help you out there, Councilmember Moore.
Okay, and I don't know if there's, if anyone's interested in this, in strengthening this in this way, but I'm hoping. Okay.
All right. Okay, so you wanted to change the definitions, which shows the first subsection, 10.90.010, under this draft ordinance. I think it would probably help if you had language that indicated what you wanted to amend particularly.
So if I might, so it sounds as though your amendment, you wish to include ADUs attached and detached in the definition of multi-unit.
Correct. Or and a junior ADU, which sounds like that could fall under the definition of second unit. Yeah.
And we had language drafted for attached ADUs being included. And Katie, it might not be too hard to broaden that as well.
To include detached? Okay.
Yeah, and junior. So if council, maybe this is the motion for discussion, and then if we, if that's, if there's a moving closer to a vote, we could share that language, or we could do it now if you'd like to see it.
Sure, let's do that. Well, let's just put that motion on the table for the purposes of discussion. And as we're discussing, if you're able to pull that language, Heather, and then add detached and junior ADUs, that would be great. So is there a second for Councilmember Moore's motion?
I'll second that, but I have another amendment. So should I second, or should I?
Well, let's have you second for purposes of discussion. And with your hand up, you also have the floor.
Yeah, I have an amendment. So for Section C, which is designated smoking areas in multi-unit residents, I'd hope to include that it should be 30 feet away from public sidewalks or any public access area, I guess.
Okay, and I apologize for being repetitive here, but let's reference the code section. You're talking about 10.30, correct? On page six of that line draft.
Yeah, I'm talking about Section C, which is under, so 10.90.30.
Okay.
So Section B talks about smoking is prohibited in multi-unit residents, except in designated common area. And the designated common area is specified in Section C. So I want to be sure that the designated common area is not right next to a sidewalk, which, because we are saying, they should be 30 feet away from entrance to multi-unit residents. But then if they designate the smoking area that's next to a sidewalk, that defeats the purpose. So I thought designated smoking area should also be 30 feet away from common entrance. I don't know, would that make that be impossible to identify an area 30 feet under the bicycle? But that's to stand on a useful interest rate.
So you're trying to propose an amendment to make this 30 feet from a sidewalk? Is that, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay, would, would staff or?
Is that reasonable?
In terms of whether that makes it such that a certain property may not be able to have a designated smoking area, I can't speak to that because that would require a study of each site. It is possible, though, if the site's not that large, that it may stop them from being able to find a suitable space of 30 feet away from their building, and also 30 feet away from any sidewalk. But, you know, it could be, it could be changed.
But I guess it's also possible they could designate an area that's in the back of the property next to their, next to the neighbor. The neighbor might be subject to 13 smokers. And so should we also, should there also be a buffer from, from their neighbor, if it were residential neighbor?
So if we have clear direction to include a reasonable distance from a residential neighbor and sidewalks, or maybe not sidewalks, but if we get clear what we're trying to have this reasonable distance from, I think we can make that change.
So I don't know whether the consultant, whether they have any, any other city have maybe perhaps adopted similar thing?
So to address a couple different questions, I wanted to get back to Councilmember Moore, who asked essentially the same question about adjacent property. The ordinance that you have in front of you tonight, the designated smoking area, does not say anything about how close it is to your neighbor. So if a council would like to add that change, it would be possible to write that language. That I have seen. I have not seen any other cities do a buffer zone from sidewalks, because the theory is that if I'm on the sidewalk, I'm actively passing, and so I wouldn't necessarily be exposed to it for a great length of time. And also for, in a residential zone, there are theoretically fewer people traveling on sidewalks than in a commercial district. And to Katie's point, I don't know the specific answer either, but it already is a little challenging to find a designated smoking area. It only works for properties that are configured a particular way. They have to be very spread out in order to have a designated smoking area.
Okay. Maybe this will be a little helpful. If I recall correctly, when we opened the veranda, I noticed that they established a smoking area downstairs, close to their, like, open patio area. The lot, as we know, is very small. So the public entrance to the front and to the side, the side- the side adjacent to another multiple, multiple family, multifamily housing project, and then behind is a parking lot to the business area behind there. I'm not sure they could do 30 feet from all those boundaries.
But then the entranceway, people are passing by also, right? Yeah, I understand 30 feet might be hard, but then if the way I was saying 30 feet from entranceway, wouldn't that be, it might be hard for some smaller apartments, too. So no one has standard, like, a buffer from sidewalk, maybe 10 feet?
No, they haven't, cities haven't approached it that way. I think where, where they're coming from is, if I'm going into a building, then I can't avoid the entrance to the building. You know, if I want to mail my letter at the post office, well, that's already a government building. If I want to mail my package at the, you know, at the UPS store, I can't avoid going in and out of the entrance, and if someone's standing right outside smoking, then that's going to be a problem for me, particularly if I have asthma or respiratory condition. So that's sort of the origin of these kinds of laws, to create that safe zone around the building. And since sidewalks, you could cross to the other side of the street, or, you know, your, your path, you're actively moving.
You can't, if you're a sidewalk, of course you can't. And you're, you're as forcing pedestrians to go into traffic?
No, no, I meant
So wait, first, are they allowed to smoke on the sidewalk?
Yes.
They're allowed to smoke right on the sidewalk?
Yes. That would not be regulated by this ordinance.
Oh, okay, so they can smoke on the sidewalk anyway, then?
And the, the, there was a, a public comment about the concern about litter outside of these buildings. There was a particular clause inserted in the ordinance to address this, which says that property owners need to maintain their, that, this is already part of the municipal code, property owners need to maintain their property free of litter, so that, that was repeated to reinforce that.
Yeah, so here it says have a receptacle for cigarette butts. So if they have designated area, it should have a receptacle for cigarette butts. Then, so maybe it doesn't make sense to have a buffer for sidewalk, since they can smoke on sidewalk anyway.
Okay, so we have a hand raised from Councilmember Moore, as well as Councilmember Way, but I, I think I'd like to provide Councilmember Way an opportunity to share some comments before we circle back. Councilmember Way.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. Okay, so the sidewalk, I think it's very hard to avoid, because if you look at seven string, sidewalks are everywhere, so they can't even have a designated place, it's just people, and I do agree, people walk through the sidewalk, so I think it's very hard to limit 30 feet or even 10 feet from the sidewalk, because it's everywhere. And I am very, I am a little concerned about ADU with single-family areas, and I thought Peggy Griffin's suggestion is very good, is to, let's try this first, and if we really need to add it, and see how it goes, because that gets, you know, single-family homes with ADU, a lot of them is living with your parents or your, your kids, so it's more like a still family unit. That's what, I just think it's maybe a little too restrictive.
Okay, any other comments? So we have Councilmember Moore with her hand raised.
Okay, so, well, it sounded to me that Peggy Griffin withdrew her comments on ADUs and moved on to page two of her, of her, of her comments. So the reasonable distance means a distance of 30 feet in any direction from an area in which smoking is prohibited, so if you were, so this isn't going to affect, we, we don't have this as a, as a distance from a property line or from the neighbor, so if you, if you have found any, any language, so I was thinking, well, you could put like 20 feet, that a designated smoking area must be 20 feet from the property line, but then the issue became the front property line, so, because that would be next to the sidewalk, presumably, and that does not seem to be reasonable. So I was just wondering if, you know, if 20 feet from the property line, exclusive of the property line, adjacent to, or something, you know, closest to the sidewalk, the, the property line near the sidewalk. I don't, I don't know how to word that part, but if you, if you're seeing a rectangular or a flag lot, if you, if there's some way to keep the designated smoking area away from the, the neighbors in, in some fashion, I don't know, if you're finding anything, understanding that, you know, we're just trying to keep the, the smoking area from being, you know, impacting the, the next-door neighbors.
If that's a question to me, we are trying to figure out the way to write this as you're talking.
Yeah, and, and we could also do further research on what, how other jurisdictions have done this and come back to council with examples of what other cities have done and how far they've set the setbacks and that sort of issue. I will say it's, it's getting, it may be difficult to draft these amendments right now at this meeting, and if council wanted to focus on, in substance, what changes they'd like to see that a draft ordinance, then, then staff could go back and draft that and have a, make sure we've got it right, and then bring it back to council at a subsequent meeting for the first reading.
Yeah, because it is, it is a challenge, and I do understand that the idea that if you have a smoking area in the, in the back of a large apartment complex, you could indeed end up with, you know, 10 people that like to hang out and, you know, sit and chain-smoke together.
Yeah, I absolutely understand the concern, I just want to make sure that we have the time and focus at this point to draft the language.
Yes, and, and so with regards for the two or more attached units, with the junior ADUs and the end ADUs, I, I see that as being no different than, than the other types of units, the duplexes and triplexes. At that, at that point, you're, you're essentially making your single-family home a duplex, or a triplex if you're adding on the ADU and the junior ADU. So I, I don't see a distinction that's, that's valid to allow somebody to be smoking there, and, you know, whether it's family members, you know, I'm particularly sensitive to that about you're going to be smoking around family members. I'd, I'd rather that was restricted, rather than exempted.
Yeah, and that would also take a little bit more time to draft if it's including all of those.
So what would also be helpful is, right now, we, you can include, you can include attached ADUs, like you've mentioned, that would actually be a fairly easy fix. That's the one that we did prepare as an option. The tricky part comes in when you try to include unattached ADUs, detached ADUs. That's what will take more time if we try to include.
Because of the sentence structure, because it, it became, because it starts with two or more attached units, and now we're discussing?
I don't, not so much, I think it's, now we're in a different realm of it's not attached in any way, and so it's a little bit different, so we'd want to look into that more.
It, it's not so much a policy issue, it's just a drafting issue, that it was a simple fix to remove an exclusion, and now you'd have to redraft it as an affirmative, what it's regulating, rather than more limiting what it's, it's excluding. So it's, it's just
So the fix to include the attached ADU is for, in that definition of I-6 that we're talking about, a detached, single-family home with an attached or detached accessory dwelling unit or second unit, you just get rid of the unattached, and then it's just a single-family home with a detached accessory dwelling unit or second.
But otherwise, we'll have, we'll have to draft a new section, I think, saying that the ordinance affirmatively applies to, to these ADUs and define them in a way that cross-references with the other sections of the city code. I'm just not prepared to do that at this instance.
Yeah, because you could end up with a detached accessory dwelling unit, you know, or, or the attached one that's within four feet of the, the property line, is the, is the concern there, and, and I don't see, yeah, yeah. So I, I guess I leave it to the rest of council, what you, for some comments about, do you want to, to, do you want to see any distance language about how close to the adjacent property lines the smoking area could be in order to prevent there being a smoking area placed right against the neighbor's property line, where you could have groups of multiple chain-smokers congregating and impacting the, the neighbors while making it nicer for the, the, the individuals who are in the, the actual complex, but impacting the other neighbors? Do we want to, do you want to have direct staff to look into that? And then also, do you want to include detached, single-family homes with attached or detached accessory dwelling units or, or second unit, as opposed to not including if it's a detached accessory dwelling unit? So I, I personally want to include all of them, because to me, that's all, it's multi, it's multi-unit residences at that point, so.
And, and I think, just if I may, one clarifying, too, is if, if you're concerned primarily on the adjacent property lines, if that's just to residential neighbors or to, like, commercial neighbors as well, or, or maybe that's something you'd like staff to look into further, what other cities have done in that regard?
Yes, I think what, what other cities have done with that would, would be really useful. The sense is, you know, when we're describing people who have been at home because of COVID and, and that's, and, so there is a slight difference in my mind for the commercial property that would be adjacent, because you would have presumably people there during the day and then leaving, or as opposed to somebody who, you know, has their kids playing in the yard, and they're there all the time.
All right, Councilmember Way, you have your hand up.
Yes, can I, may I make a proposal? It looks like we need to do more research for Councilmember Moore's request. So this is our only first reading, right? We can always, on the second reading, disregard it and do another one. So if we can just do a first reading, add the detached, add the attached ADU as, because we already have the language, and we can do it today, but we instruct the staff to bring, bring, you know, what Councilmember Moore wants, and then so we can review it next time. So we might do another first reading next time, just like we did with the dark sky, the birth safety one. Or we just don't do anything and then wait until next time, but, because I don't think we can solve it right now. We, 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 we need to instruct the staff to look at what Council, Councilmember Moore wants.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Way. Councilmember Moore?
I'm, I'm amenable to that. I, I, I like the idea of getting something started and going through, that, I think that's an interesting idea.
Okay, would you be willing to withdraw your motion and put that motion on the table, which deals with attached ADUs only, as your modification?
Yes.
Is there a second to Councilmember Moore's motion?
I'll second that.
Great, all right. Is there any desire for further discussion here? I, I take it from staff that the language is, is prepared?
I'll share my screen, so it'll be part, it'll be available for the public to see what they'll see when we bring it back for the second reading. So all we did was we, with a detached accessory dwelling unit or second unit.
Hold on.
You can bring that back.
And, and that's the definition of what's excluded, just to be clear.
Okay, got it. So, so that achieves what we're looking to do?
Yes, so now attached ADUs will be included in it.
Okay, great, wonderful. I put my faith in you. So are there any other comments at this point?
A quick question, would an attached junior ADU also be included? Because that, that kind of fell into the second unit.
I don't have the answer for that right now.
Okay, we'll just start, we'll start with what we've got.
But I think we have, I, I'm assuming that, I am taking this discussion as also providing direction to staff to come up with language that would apply the, the ban to detached, attached, and junior ADUs, and so we would come back with that option for council, as well as information and draft language on, or information on what other cities have done for distance from neighboring property lines for designated smoking areas and, and draft language, proposed language for that as well.
Great, thank you.
Okay, great. Let us go ahead and vote on Councilmember Moore's motion that Councilmember Way has seconded. Madam City Clerk, if you would please conduct the roll call vote.
May I conduct the first, the first reading of the title of the ordinance?
Yes, please conduct the first reading first as, as amended, and because the motion's already on the table, let's conduct the roll call vote after that.
This is the first reading of ordinance number 21-2224, as amended, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cupertino, amending City Code, Chapter 10.90, Title 10, Public Peace, Safety and Morals, to prohibit smoking in multi-unit housing in certain outdoor areas, which includes the finding that adoption of the ordinance is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Way?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Mr. Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Mr. Grayson.
Great, thank you very much. And we are at the end of our, our agenda. We have no further oral communications. We're now at council and staff comments and future agenda items. I will limit everyone to two minutes each on this. So would anyone like to go, let us provide our city manager with the opportunity to provide any staff comments at this point first?
I have none at the moment, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Okay, anyone from council, would you like to share any comments, any contacts or future agenda items? Councilmember Way?
I didn't realize, I pulled my hands up. Okay, I'd like to propose
Oh.
A future agenda items. Can I do that now?
Yes, please do.
Oh, okay, so we heard from Connie Cunningham about she supports the Asian-American community because of the rising incidence of anti-Asian-American hate crimes. So I wonder if we could pass a resolution to support AAPI community, and then, because that really shows our councils in supportive of our community, and then we are, so that would be my proposal. I would like to see if we can pass a resolution, put an agenda, put our resolution to support the AAPI community. You know, within this, this atmosphere, this anti-Asian communities, even in our Bay Area, is pretty prevalent right now. So I think if our city council can stand up and say, we're standing with you, and I think that's a really good gesture, especially our community is comprised of a lot of AAPI members here.
Okay, great. Well, you don't need a second, I was already intending to bring forward a resolution to that effect. I was gonna
Thank you.
Interface with our, our city manager to see if we could perhaps do that on the 16th. And also, you know, I wanted some language in there on, you know, speaking out against violence and hate crimes. So, so thank you for the suggestion. Was there anything else, Councilmember Way?
Oh, yes, actually, yes. John, John, what's his last name? I forgot, An, An, Anos? And Dan Marshall, they came here twice to ask us to support, endorse national legislature that would put a price on carbon. Do we want to put an agenda and talk about it, and maybe pass the resolution? Because they came twice, and I thought that's, you know, climate control, it's really important for us, for Cupertino, we're kind of staying the front of it. So I'm just asking if we have support to agendize and then support that resolution. I'm just asking if we have support to agendize and, and support that resolution.
This isn't the first time the topic has visited us. I, I believe that it at least hit Sustainability Commission. I don't have a clear recollection right now as to what happened after that and how our council had treated it. But I would be happy to go back and ask staff to conduct some diligence with regard to our history on this carbon tax and, you know, go forward accordingly from there.
Right, thank you.
No, you're welcome. Is there a second to Councilmember Wei's request that we agendize this, however, at this point?
I'll go ahead and second it.
Okay. Okay, so I'll conduct the diligence with the city management staff and we'll, you know, we'll, we'll consider what's been done and what makes sense in terms of our timing going forward. Now, Councilmember Willie, you have your hand raised next.
Yeah, not an agenda item, but going back to our report out period, you know, I mean, we're going on five hours that we've been here tonight. And if you look at the number of attendees that are still here in attendance at this late hour, 11:45 PM at night, if this is the only time that we're allowed to let the community know something that we feel they're wanting to know about, could be about something about Lehigh, it could be 5G cell, or it could be attacks on our Asian-American community, they're not going to hear it. And so what I would hope that our council would do is realize the importance of us being able to talk to our constituents, and there, there are five of us. I, I really support Mayor Paul's three-minute limits on just about everything, which is good. Three times five is 15 minutes, 15 minutes out of a five-hour council meeting during a period of time when the community is much more likely to hear our, what our thoughts are, especially after oral communication, so that that might be the topic that we might want to let them know, hey, I heard what you said, I feel it's important, and at the end of the meeting, I'll try and bring in a, get it put as an agenda item. And so I, I'm asking that we be a little bit more open to what the individual council member, we're all different, we all have different thoughts and, and priorities, and give a little bit more latitude to that three-minute period out of a five-hour council meeting. So.
Okay, well, yeah, speaking of which, you're, you're at your two minutes, but Councilmember Willie, I, let, let me respond procedurally to this. I've already conducted the diligence on this, and in fact, the city attorney has notified me that after oral communications at the beginning, we can put a section where council and staff comments on, you know, oral communications in a similar manner that we're doing here. So we can move that up behind oral communications and also have kind of a cleanup item like we're having at the end of the meeting now. So there's no reason why that can't be placed there after oral communication.
Well, I, I don't think it needs to be an extra three minutes or an extra two minutes. You know, the three minutes and then let each councilman decide, did they have a committee assignment that actually had something so important that that's what they want to talk about? And if not, then that three-minute window is still not, not adding anything else, just being a little bit more flexible with that existing three minutes.
Right, well-
For our meeting short.
Well, for, for the purposes of appropriate notice to the community, I mean, I, I suppose we could turn that into report on community assignments or, you know, feedback to oral communications or something like that. But, but yeah, I mean, logistically, it's very similar to what you're saying, because they would be virtually next to each other on the agenda.
That speaks to me. That speaks to me.
Suffice to say, you know, we'll provide an opportunity to follow up on that without, of course, getting into the substance of items, essentially moving it up earlier in the meeting.
Great, thank you.
All right, great. So Vice Mayor Chow, followed by, well, now, Councilmember Moore has her hand down. So Vice Mayor Chow?
Okay. So, um, so I attended a Taiwan Lantern Festival on the 21st of February, February and last Friday. We had, I had an office hour with Public Safety Officer, Public Safety Commission Chair. And I think this Friday, John, John and I will have a roundtable at 7 o'clock. And reminder for everyone tomorrow is the Lehigh quarterly update from Joe, Supervisor Joseph Miedien. As for agenda item, I'd like to propose that, um, it seems we need a more consistent outreach methodology, is because I subscribe to everything on the city, but I never receive a notice about surveys when they are available. And as I was researching, preparing my notice to the residents, I found out there is a safe route to school survey, asking whether we should defund the police from surrounding schools so that they, we won't have schools trying to write tickets to parents who violate traffic laws around pickup or drop of type. That seems to be an important survey, but I asked around for the parents, they never received it from their, so CUSD didn't send it out, FUHSD didn't send it out. And, and then there is a method of, there is the key activity board, the application process. I find out the last board, eight, I think like eight out of 10 or 11 are from Montevista. And turns out Cupertino High didn't send out the notice. So it seems there is inconsistency on agencies that who work with us to help us send this message out. So I hope there is consistent outreach methodology. We don't have to hire consultant every time we need to do outreach. And then another item is, and as we, I'm working, talking to the commissioners, they are suggesting that for new commissioners, there, it's better probably they have, the previous commission can come in, attend the meeting, give them an update on what's happening, what happened in the past two years, so that it's a domain-specific training. So it's not just training about Brown Act, they also need training about what Public Safety Commission has done in the past two years. So they have some background knowledge and when they join the commission. And that's what they propose. Yeah, okay.
Okay, great. So let me, let me, let me, let me see if I can understand this. So you're looking for an item on trying to achieve some consistency in our outreach methodology between jurisdictions, including our school districts. And then the other one is seeing if previous commissioners can come in and, and share some knowledge with the existing commissions.
Yeah, as part of a regular orientation for new commissions.
As part of the orientation.
Yeah. So in terms of outreach, it's not just limited to partners. It's just, for example, the city has a list of HOAs, right? They can reach out to HOAs and all these things. But when do we do what? When do we reach out? So at least we should have a list of all these venues we could outreach to, block, neighborhood, and then, then when do we reach out to each of these menu, venue for each event? I wonder if there is a consistent system.
Right, yeah. No, I, I'm, I'm trying to get my head wrapped around how we would potentially make that an agenda item. Yeah, is there, is there-
There's a work program item, yeah.
I'm sorry?
Maybe it's like this is a work program item for the proposed work program.
Yeah, maybe, maybe it needs to be formulated a little bit better in order for it to make itself into a, you know, a fully fledged agenda item description. Okay, well, that's, that's, thank you for sharing that. I will ask if anybody at this point would like to second either of those requests. You know, frequently, I, I'm, for my part, I'm trying to figure out how that would manifest itself as an agenda item for either one of those, but.
As a starter, I could actually just check on her, the main part, which was notifications of surveys.
Right.
Because I'll just check on that, no problem.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, that, that does seem informational, frankly, in terms of being able to invoke the, you know, relevant statute that allows you to get information from, from staff directly. Okay, so, well, thank you for introducing that. And Councilmember Moore does have her hand up. Councilmember Moore?
So I'm, I'm not necessarily suggesting this is an agenda item, but kind of circling back to our, our level of service item, our, our general plan EIR traffic study was looking at 2 million square feet of office at, at the Valco site. And, and it came up with, that, that traffic analysis came up with levels of service for, for the intersections, the main intersections for the city, but now you're missing the 2 million square feet of office. So you would ultimately end up with improved levels of service calculations. So before, in the 2014 GPEIR, you had about 16 or 17 intersections, which, you know, had significant impacts that could not be mitigated. And that's largely due to all of that office component there. And then coupled with the fact that the, the language in the general plan is, strives towards these levels of service, well, it could very well be that had that general plan traffic study been done without the 2 million square feet of office, that a lot of those intersections would not have blown through the, those levels of service, and that the general plan could have had language in it, which was, which was, which was solid. Instead of strives for, it would be adheres to, you know, will maintain, it's not a choice, not a, not a negotiable item. So I just wanted to bring that up, that that is kind of a hanging question out there. And then I did want to hear from Mayor Paul about the Outback Side site, Measure A funding and the county issue. Where did that information come from? I'm, I'm very curious about it. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. So we're, and that's right, at two minutes, like Councilmember Moore, you know, we're, we're, we're just shy of midnight right now. Let me respond to Councilmember Moore's last question. So I, I received outreach from our supervisor covering our district, Supervisor Semidian, indicating that on the consent calendar for the last county board of supervisors, you know, consideration was a Measure A-funded potential acquisition of the shopping center where the Outback Steakhouse used to be in Cupertino. So that was the first. I had really heard of it showing up on a county agenda. And I expect at this point, we're probably going to need to put it on our March 16th agenda, because they're revisiting it on March 23rd. So their, their directive was to reach out to our community to get some kind of input. And so we only have one regularly scheduled meeting between now and the 23rd of March. So, so that, that's my, my understanding of how this is going to transpire. You know, again, if we had some kind of council-driven and publicly-driven ability to assess and identify sites, that we could be, you know, saying that these are preferred, you know, areas, then I think there is a good chance that we might have more options in this kind of situation. So, you know, that being said, we're right at my, my 12 o'clock stated, you know, goal for trying to get us adjourned. Thank you very much for an excellent set of discussions tonight. I think we got a lot done, and we will see you at our next regularly scheduled meeting of the Cupertino City Council, which will be on March 16th. Thanks very much. Meeting adjourned.
Okay.
Good night, everyone.